Good evening. Welcome to the Wilmer City Council Meeting for March 5th, 2007. Grow call. Mayor Heike.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Swenson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Dockin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Thanks, Kevin. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening to our citizens who are here in the council chambers tonight, and good evening to the citizens who are watching this broadcast on our local access television. Tonight, the city council meeting has two public hearings that'll begin in just a couple of minutes. One has to do with partial tax abatement for Northern Factory Sales, and the second one has to do with another business that is planning to come to Wilmer called Feed Logic Systems. Before we get to those public hearings, I'd like to ask the council if there's any changes or additions or deletions to the agenda for tonight. Seeing and hearing none, we'll then go to the consent agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Tonight, that agenda includes the minutes of the last city council meeting for February 20th, the utilities commission minutes of February 26th, the planning commission minutes of February 28th, the building inspection report for the month of February, the transit board commission minutes of January 16th, the police commission report from February 5th. There's also involved in the consent agenda an application called the Minnesota Gambling Application for Exempt Permit. That's being requested by the American Association of University Women. They have a state conference that's going to be held here in Wilmer this spring, and apparently they have some program that relates to a raffle or something at that convention. For the council members, is there anything that you wish to discuss on this consent agenda? Councilmember Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to talk about the last council meeting, planning commission, and I have a question on the cat minutes.
All right. With anyone else? If not, those in favor of approving the remainder of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Councilmember Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question on the comment that Mr. Ronnie made concerning consultation with Kennedy and Graves is on page seven of the last city council, and it's just below the middle. He indicates that in consultation with Kennedy and Graves' legal staff, the city's ability to head straight westward by condemnation proceeding should be successful, and that the landowner's objection should not be meritorious. Also noted was that if the Minnesota Pollution Control Authority was properly informed throughout the process, they would not likely levy a heavy financial penalty for a delay. I'm wondering why "if" is there. I mean, why would we not be doing that? It says that if the Minnesota Pollution Control Authority was properly informed, I would assume we're going to properly inform them, are we not?
Craig, do you want to address that, or Kevin?
Well, we certainly are. I don't, I think that's more just semantics of the position of "in the future."
Okay.
We're stating it "in the future." If we do that in the future, most likely, we won't severe.
But there isn't a reason why we would not do it, is there?
None that I'm aware of.
Yeah, okay, very good. Move to approve these council minutes.
Second.
Those in favor of approving the council minutes of February 20th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Councilmember Dockin again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And then on the planning commission, I note that Printmasters had a plan review, and that's item number three. And down a couple of lines, it says, "The commission discussed the inevitability of the First Street commercial properties to the west side of Second Street. They also talked about updating the comprehensive plan guiding this growth and how it may be done through, done in different ways. Instead of reacting to requests, there would be a formulated plan of how the zoning could progress in this area." To me, this doesn't make any sense because we're now asking to have another house moved, two houses north of that is now an empty lot for Subway, so now we're going to have 912 being moved, and there'll be one house and then another parking lot. I mean, I just, that does not sound to me like this is the way to do things, and I certainly don't support this. And I know that there is one individual here, Mr. Mayor, that would like to speak on this issue, and whether he speaks here or at the public forum, I guess, is your call.
Let me ask you, Mr. Dockin, did you speak about this at the planning commission?
No, I did not. I was not there. I was not able to go to that meeting.
Did the individual who came here tonight speak about it at the planning commission?
Pardon?
Did the individual who's here tonight speak about this at the planning commission?
He was not notified.
All right.
And he was told it was, that it was not necessary to notify people.
Before, Kevin, do you have any reaction, or Bruce, perhaps? Kevin, do you have any comment about this?
On the notification, I let, if that's a concern, I let Bruce talk about that. Bruce, do you want to comment on? Bruce Peterson is the Director of Planning and Development for the city. Bruce?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, under the terms of the city's zoning ordinance and in accordance with state statute, it's not necessary to give public notice when it is not a public hearing. This is a matter that requires plan review by the planning commission and by staff. It's not set up as a conditional use. The ability to use residential property for parking for an adjacent general business district is permitted by right under our ordinance, and for that matter, there was no public hearing held, only a discussion among staff and the planning commission to determine if the proposal that was submitted was the best that could be done on that site.
And has a decision been made now, Bruce, about that?
The planning commission did approve the use of that property for parking as our ordinance does permit.
And this is property on Second Street?
That is correct.
Second Street East or West?
Second Street Southeast.
Southeast. All right.
I think it is appropriate, you know, Mr. Dockin does state that the planning commission recognized the inevitability of that happening. With the constraints that exist for businesses on First Street, most of them have no option but to expand to the rear, and as time goes on, I believe we're going to see most, if not all, of the property on the west side of East Second Street become commercial properties affiliated with existing First Street businesses.
And the land that is going to be turned into a parking lot is already under the ownership of the, is it Subway?
In this particular case, it's Printmasters.
Printmasters, okay. They already own the land?
I'm not sure if they own it or if they have a purchase agreement on it. They do have a legal property right to apply for the land, for the plan review, though.
And what's on the land right now?
There's a single-family home, rental property.
And what's the future that, are they going to knock it down or try to move it off, or what?
I don't know. My guess is they'll try to have someone move it off, but I'm not sure what the market is for that type of structure right now. Could very well be demolished.
Okay, so this plan by your comments is all according to what zoning ordinance allows for property owners?
That is correct, and the planning commission will address that in the comprehensive plan. Our current plan right now refers to these areas as transition areas, and I think we'll do a better job of defining those areas and explaining the transition of commercial uses into those neighborhoods in the new comprehensive plan.
All right. We've had this discussion before about what's happening on First Street as it moves both east and west off of First Street. This is not a new issue. I know that some of the neighbors in those residential areas don't like what's happening, but this discussion hasn't been here before. I will allow this gentleman to say something. If you'd come up to the microphone, give your name and address, please. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Richard Bistrup, and I live at 912 Southeast Second Street. And I was not aware that this was going on until I read it in the paper Friday. So I stopped in the city office this morning and talked to Megan, and she informed me that they didn't have to notify me because of this. Well, what in the world are you people thinking that you allow this? Do you know what that does to the value of my house, to have a parking lot with trucks and semis and stuff going through there? And Second Street is a very narrow street. You're only allowed to park on one side because it's so narrow. And even then, in the wintertime, you can't, if somebody's parked, you can't meet another car coming. And now we're dumping more traffic onto it? And it's, yeah, it says in the paper that it's going to be a one-way exit, but that will involve semis, because I see semis in there unloading at Printmasters, so they're going to go out that way. I don't think he's going to be able to even make the turn. And that driveway that's existing is a shared driveway with the next house north. And I just can't believe how they keep raising my taxes, saying the value of my house is more, and then they keep doing this stuff. And it was just last year that Tiffany Square got permission to buy two or three houses down at the end of the block and turn that into commercial. I understand what Mr. Peterson said, that, you know, maybe eventually somewhere down the road, it's going to all be commercial, but what about the people that invested money? I've been living there for 27 years, and now I'm retired, and now I see it all going. I just, it doesn't make any sense to me. If he doesn't have enough room, then he should go somewhere else. We got plenty of places for a printing place to go. It isn't as if they have to be in direct traffic flow for printing. People go looking for printers. So I guess I would like somebody to tell me what the rationale is to allow this thing. You know, it's going to be, the parking will be within, my property line is a matter of inches from the foundation of that house. They have an air easement from me so that they can maintain their house. So now I'm going to have parking within seven, six, seven feet from my bedroom? I don't think any of you people would like it. I sure don't. I see he probably needs more parking, but that's not my problem. My problem is, it's what it's going to do to the value of my house.
You mentioned that your valuation is going to change.
Oh, I'm sure it will.
How do you know that?
Well, it's already gone down on some of them, up where the Subway went through. Now, most of those are rental up at that end, but...
Have you had your property app...
Appraised, no.
Or have you talked to a realtor about?
No.
Okay, so you're thinking that the valuation...
Well, would you, would you want to move in next to a commercial business parking lot?
I want to ask Bruce Peterson, can you address Mr. Bistrup's concern about the driveway and if there's trucks in there, can they make the turn onto Second Street? Do you know anything, what the widths are in there?
The purpose of this parking lot is to accommodate customer and employee parking, and the, there's no reason for any of the delivery trucks to do anything different than what they do now on the site. The purpose for the parking back there was simply to eliminate congestion on the site. It will improve the traffic flow of the trucks that are to use the site. Excuse me. Additionally, it will reduce traffic conflicts on First Street, which is a much busier street than Second Street, by taking some of that traffic off of First Street. When it discharges from this parking lot, it will eliminate some of that conflict on First Street. So I don't think you're going to see semis going out onto Second Street. They'd be foolish. If they tried it once, they'd never try it a second time.
All right. And then what is this air easement? I've never heard that before. What is that?
Well, it's in my deed that there was an air easement.
What does that mean?
Well, it means simply that they have, I have, can't put a fence there to keep them from maintaining his home. Now, I'd never heard of it before either until I came home one day and they had dug up my, the whole front of my yard to fix their sewer because it ran across my front yard, and I started looking at my deed and stuff, and it, and it's in there, that they only have an air easement, and if, once the house becomes 50 percent beyond repair, they can't rebuild there because it's right on my property line.
Are you familiar with that, Bruce?
Yeah, it's typically issued in a case where there is a building very close to a property line, and there's a protection built in so that they can use, they at least have permission to go on the adjacent property to do maintenance and repairs.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Bistrup, this issue is before the council, and they will be voting on this in just a minute to either approve or not approve the planning commission minutes, so...
Well, I appreciate your listening to me. It's just very upsetting to me to have it come right next door to me. It was bad enough for Subway to do it, the extra traffic coming by, and there is, they do have quite a bit. And they've parked right at the end of my driveway to eat their sandwich. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bistrup. Any other comments about that, Chip?
Yes. I note that there were two dissenting votes, Mr. Beer and, is it Alvarez? Can you tell me why they dissented? What was their rationale for dissenting?
I cannot. Megan Sauer, the city planner, conducted that meeting. I was out of town.
I don't support this, Mr. Mayor, so I will not move to accept this planning commission minutes.
All right. Does any other council member want to move on this issue?
I'll move to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the planning commission minutes of February 28th. Further comment about that? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, I'm looking at this, and I'm just a little confused because I heard the gentleman say his address is 912, and I see in here that that's the address that we have for this, for this property in question.
Oh, his is 916. Mr. Bistrup?
916.
Your 916? I'm, then I didn't hear you correctly.
I think so, I had all the same thing.
Okay. Okay. And Bruce, just some of the discussion, I guess you weren't there, but I would assume that it's come up before, this idea of turning Second into a one-way, and I just wonder if you have any...
Well, we've heard that come up at various times in the past. It's never really made any headway at the planning commission or at the council level. I think that if you, if you take a step back and look at the broader perspective and what's happening on First Street and how the needs of the commercial sector are evolving, I think everyone can understand the necessity of moving either east or west off of First Street. The planning commission and staff certainly are aware of the concerns of the residential property owners on East Second Street and East and West Second Street. The bottom line is, when these types of requests are made, the council has determined previously that this will be a permitted use with plan review. So the role of the planning commission is to make sure that the plans for the parking area that are submitted meet the ordinance standards as far as setbacks, screening, landscaping, those types of issues. Beyond that, they're really not in a position to say yes or no to the use itself. That's already preordained.
Correct. And as far as the practicality of trucks going through there, it's, it's not a restriction of this, of the findings of the commission, but as a practical matter, it's not going to happen. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I would say that's true. If the council is more comfortable that, with that, you could certainly make that a condition.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Reese?
Bruce, Mr. Bistrup was speaking about parking so close to his home. Is his property directly adjacent to this lot, to this parking lot?
The cell is on the south side of this property, and the parking will be 10 feet off that property line.
I was just looking at that because it says, but does that mean the front of the vehicle will be 10 feet from the property line?
Yes.
And then it also says that there is a fencing? No.
Right, there is a fence that's required.
There's going to be fencing put up.
There has to be an opaque fence on that property line. That's correct.
By opaque, you're talking like a chain link or...
You can't see through it. Nope. It has to be 75 percent opaque, meaning 75 percent surface, so that it does, in effect, screen the adjacent use.
Any other comments on the motion? Councilmember DeBleek?
The definition of the fence, would that be, you know, you say a screened or opaque fence? They do that with the chain link fence and those slattings that go in?
Technically, that does meet the definition that the, that the ordinance includes. From a practical standpoint, most property owners do not put up that type of a fence next to residential properties.
I would hope that wouldn't, may not, may meet the intent, but I hope that is not what they intend to put there. And also, the issue with the truck traffic, is that, say, that's some condition that we could put on?
Well, you certainly can. I don't think there's much of a threat of semis using that. You could see an occasional straight axle truck that could make it through there and make those turns, but any semi-driver that would pre-scout his route is not going to take a semi on the Second Street from that property. But if the council's more comfortable making that a condition, I'd say by all means do it.
Would they be able to do that with the way our, our truck routes are laid out? I don't know. Could they legally drive a, drive a semi or a truck out on Second Street?
City engineer says no.
They would be subject to being ticketed if they were, if that were the case. Okay.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd move an amendment to the motion that we add the condition that semi-traffic not be allowed to exit onto Second Street.
There's a motion for an amendment to not allow semi-traffic on Second Street. Is there a second to that amended, amendment? Hearing no second, that motion dies for a lack of a second. We're back to the original motion, which is to approve the planning commission minutes. Any other comments before the council votes on this?
I would think with the, the truck issue, could they put up a sign, "No trucks," or that type of thing, just, you know, not, no truck accident or something to that effect to remind any truck driver that that's not a, not a route for trucks?
Yeah, the city engineer says that it's not the closest route, so it wouldn't qualify as a legitimate truck route, so they'd be taking that risk of ticketing.
Okay. All right, are you ready to vote on the motion? All right, those in favor of approving the planning commission minutes of February 28th, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The vote is seven to one. The minutes are approved. Councilmember Dockin, did you have something about the transit?
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to maybe ask Councilmember Fagerly about this ride net. I see that it's, it's a program to provide gap transportation. Is that something you think is going to happen, Rick?
No, Mr. DeBleek is the chairman, but in some way or form, they'll come up with a program, but they're not sure what yet. Kevin's on the committee also, so...
Councilmember Dockin, at this point, the negotiations with the owner, Mr. Dale Victor, have concluded, and it reduced his administrative fee, which was $100 to $600 when he started, down to $2,400 a year. And with that amount and the budget of $20,000, the operations board has directed its CAT staff to compile a complete agreement for signatures, and that could take place within the month.
This will be only evening service?
5:45 to around 10 o'clock. And rough estimates, it would cost $17,000 for the remainder of 2007, plus the admin fee.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd move to finally his minutes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to file the transit board minutes of January 16th. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Now we will begin the public hearings. The first one is now open. This one has to do with a partial tax abatement for Northern Factory Sales. And Bruce Peterson, would you explain what this is all about?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, Northern Factory Sales has requested of the city a partial tax abatement for their new site in the industrial park. As you'll recall, they recently moved from a 33,000-square-foot building at the intersection of Trot Avenue and Highway 40 to the former Somedy Supply Building in the industrial park. What's being proposed is a five-year decreasing abatement to phase in the difference between the real estate taxes at their former site and the real estate taxes at their current site. In the case of the city, this total abatement is estimated to be around $17,370 over that five-year period. And again, it's a decreasing term by 20 percent each of the five years. It's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt the resolution approving the proposed property tax abatement, and which authorizes the mayor and administrator to execute the required business subsidy agreement.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on this request or make any statement about this, or ask any questions? I would like to enter into the record a letter that is written to the mayor and council members from our city administrator. It's a short letter, but it's an important letter. Says, "Dear Mr. Mayor and city council members, I feel it is important to note during the discussion of the Northern Factory Sales tax abatement request that the company considered but rejected the idea of participating in the Job Z program. Apparently, the company was not comfortable with the idea of not paying any real property taxes on their new facility. Not wanting to shift such a tax burden to other existing Wilmer properties, the company has opted for a partial tax abatement. In this day and age of economic development competitiveness, when companies generally leverage communities for every conceivable tax break in the name of growth and job opportunities, I find Northern Factory Sales' approach to be a breath of fresh air. Northern Factory Sales, Roger Goke and Nathan Roan are to be commended for their community and entrepreneurial spirit. I strongly encourage the council's support of the tax abatement. Signed, Michael Schmidt, City Administrator." Is there anyone else from the audience that wishes to make any comments, ask any questions? If not, the public hearing is now closed. The matter comes before the council members. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, first of all, congratulations to Northern Factory Sales, the ownership and your management and your whole team. I mean, in this day and age, it isn't easy for businesses to succeed, and here we have a case of a local company that's having an opportunity and a need to expand right in our own backyard. And I think that's absolutely phenomenal, and I think it, it speaks highly of the organization. I think the fact, the, the partial abatement speaks volumes about the ownership and leadership of that company, and I strongly support adopting the resolution. And I'll, I'll introduce the resolution approving the proposed property tax abatement.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution approving the proposed property tax abatement... We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution approving the proposed property tax abatement for Northern Factory Sales. Further comment about this?
Mr. Mayor, I haven't been in town as long as this company's been in existence, but I know some of the history and how it's grown and the entrepreneurship that has been throughout the company since its beginning, starting from just a very small building on East Highway 12 and then moving across the way from there and then moving out to the industrial park and now into their existing building. And I too would like to congratulate them and thank them for their participation in our city.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ditto to Doug's remarks. But are we to assume that they have to go to the school and county also then?
I think they already have.
They have?
I think they were at the school board, right, Bruce?
The school hearing has been set and we are meeting with county people this week to set a time to get before the county board. So this is the first taxing jurisdiction approval that would be required.
And all three jurisdictions have to approve of it for it to be in effect, correct?
All three jurisdictions have to approve it if all three jurisdictions are going to participate. If the county or school district did not participate, the city has the option of extending the length of its abatement to try to make up for that. But in the past, that's never been an issue. The county has been an active participant in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? From the mayor's office, I also wish to thank Northern Factory Sales for their consideration of the community at large by using a graduated type of abatement to help their company but to help our community. So thank you to the owners and staff of Northern Factory Sales for that planning process. All right, are you ready to vote then? Roll call, Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The resolution passes. Congratulations. I will now open up the second public hearing, which has to do with a Job Z business subsidy for FeedLogic Systems Incorporated. Bruce, would you explain that, please?
Mayor Haiki, members of the council, FeedLogic Systems, Inc. is a new ag technology business that has established itself at the MinWest Technology Campus. This company has requested Job Z status. As you will recall, the entire MinWest campus has been granted Job Z status by a previous action of the council, when the council decided that it would make a blanket approval for qualifying businesses to receive the Job Z benefits at that site in an attempt to help the managers of the campus, the owners of the campus market their property availability. The campus, as I mentioned, was previously qualified for Job Z. However, it is necessary that each individual business that comes onto the campus be individually qualified for Job Z as well. FeedLogic meets the local and state requirement for the Job Z program and the related business subsidies. It's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt the resolution conferring Job Z status on FeedLogic Systems, Inc. And authorize the mayor and administrator to execute the business subsidy agreement.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there anyone who wishes to comment about this? Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I simply have one clarification I'd like to make, and that is to record the name as FeedLogic Corporation rather than FeedLogic Systems Incorporated. So it should be read as FeedLogic Corporation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Kathy is our associate director for the Economic Development Center here in Wilmer that serves both the city and the county. Anyone else from the audience that wishes to comment or ask any questions about this? If not, then I will close the public hearing. The matter again comes before the city council. Councilmember Reese?
Given the change that Kathy pointed out, it's just a matter of recognizing that change when the resolution is introduced. Is that correct?
We'll correct all the documents from the executive summary for the master file through the resolution to show that.
I would introduce that resolution with those changes in.
Second. We have a motion and a second for a resolution that confers Job Z status on FeedLogic Corporation and authorizes the mayor and city administrator to execute that business subsidy agreement. Further comment or questions? Councilmember Dokken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Bruce Peterson did a fine job this morning on open mic and really explained both of these public hearings. I wasn't aware until I was listening, until I heard Bruce say today that this FeedLogic Corporation designs, builds and monitors these systems. And will they do that on the campus out there?
It is my understanding that all of the company functions will occur on that campus. Obviously, a lot of their system monitoring work occurs in the field where they actually do their installations.
How many people do you think eventually will be employed by this?
I would like to defer to Kathy on that question.
Kathy, is this a guest here?
Yes, it is.
Would you like to come up and introduce yourself, please? You're connected with this company, right?
Yes, I am.
Your name, please?
I'm Larry Erickson. I'm the CEO for FeedLogic Corporation.
Well, welcome, Larry.
Thank you very much.
City council?
Thank you very much. To answer your question, Mr. Dokken, Councilman Dokken, the monitoring, we can, if our customers allow us, right from our campus, monitor the actions that happen in their barns and help them to optimize their profitability and production efficiency. So it's kind of the new age.
Wonderful.
And I just would like to say that I, about a year ago, we made a decision to move the company to the Midwest. Our customers are in Manitoba and Saskatchewan, Minnesota, Iowa, Illinois, Indiana, and we were located in northwest Washington, where this technology was invented by a swine producer in Abbotsford, British Columbia. So we made the decision and I took our firm on a forest city tour through Iowa to find our spot for relocation. And we were all set to go to Davenport and I got a phone call one day from your economic development authority, Steve and Kate, and all I can tell you is the rest is history. Those people are so dynamic. We were ready to go to Davenport and they turned us around, brought us out here, showed us the opportunity, introduced us to the Wilmer poultry people, the Novatec engineering people, and we are delighted. We are repopulating, re-staffing our company here in Wilmer. We find the community to be just a wonderful community to come to and the people that we have on our team now, we are just delighted. So thank you for having us. We look forward to being part of your economic development in this community.
Larry, could we ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Can you explain what your timeline is, when you might be moving forward with this?
The, all of our worldly goods of the company were unloaded at the campus yesterday, two days ago, not on Sunday, on Saturday. And we're open for operation as we speak.
And then, Mr. Dokken asked, and I was thinking too, but what's the employee base of this company?
Right now, we are re-staffing. We have, right now with the company here in Wilmer, we'll have about seven starting out. Then we have people in the field that service and maintain our equipment. And we have, not employees, but we have sales agents in Canada, looking for one in Australia now. So we're sending our first two systems to Australia next month, sending three systems to Canada this month in March. So we have, beginning to get a little bit of a worldwide focus to what we're doing. Somebody asked what the total number would be. I answered that question at the Lions Club, I gave a little talk the other day, and I said, "Well, God willing, 100." But truly, we have a business that can grow very substantially. We have a very strong value proposition. And if we get our sales together, get our name out, our position in Wilmer here is wonderful for our connectivity to Canada. A little hard to Australia, but great to Canada, great to the Midwest. So we're pleased to be here.
Good. Can I ask, what was your impression of the campus where you're located now?
Well, at first, we had to dream a little bit about how we could convert a residential cottage to an area suitable for assembly. Mr. Dokken had asked about, do we produce the product? We do, but understand it's assembly work. We buy standard electronic boxes and circuitry and we assemble it together. We don't do any welding or any of that kind of work there. But the folks at the MinWest campus were very accommodating, always very inquisitive, asking us questions. And we together built, redesigned the inside. We hope you'll all come over. We have sort of a simulated barn inside there with a rail. Our robots run on a rail, which is affixed to the ceiling of a swine barn. So we have that running in there, so you can come and see our robots. Actually, we test them there and install them there.
Good. Councilmembers, anybody else want to make any comments or ask any questions?
Welcome to Wilmer.
Thanks for picking me up.
Thank you very much. Very good.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you very much. Anything else before we vote? This is a resolution, roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The resolution passes. Congratulations and best of luck, Mr. Erickson, and to you and to your company.
Thank you, Larry.
All right. We will now go to the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. And I see that there's a person named Tammy, and I may mispronounce this, is it Knapper or Kanapper? With a K, okay. Kanapper? Tammy, do you want to come up to the microphone and tell us what's on your mind? And please give your address, too.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Tammy Kanapper and I live on the east side of Eagle Lake, 5546 County Road 9 Northeast. I don't live in the city limits, but I do have city sewer. And last Saturday, or last Sunday morning, February 25th, the sewer system backed up into my basement and I had sewer water running in two of the drains until I happened to walk downstairs and notice it. When I did that, I immediately called the wastewater treatment facility and the person on duty checked his computers and said the lift station was working outside my home. It apparently wasn't because the sewer was rushing into my basement. And about 45 minutes later, a city employee came out and checked the lift station and found out that it wasn't working, that there was some hair or some things tangled around a float so that the lift station wasn't working properly and it didn't alert through the computer system that they had that it wasn't working. Once they came out and flipped the manual switch that they had to and the lift station started working, then the water began, or quit gushing into my basement and it receded. So I obviously had to have Service Master come in and clean the inch of sewer water out of my basement. And I did lose some personal items that were saturated in the sewer water. I had to have linoleum removed and sheet rock would have to be cut off and replaced. Because of this damage, I did call the wastewater treatment facility and talked to Colleen. She was very sympathetic, cordial, apologetic. Basically, wanted to know from my end how I knew to call them and what, she wanted to make sure the steps were in place so that if this happened to anybody else, that they would know what to do. She also mentioned that some, there are other people around the lake who have an automatic shut-off valve or something that the city can come out and shut off when there is trouble or if they think there's going to be trouble. And I said, "Sign me up for that. We don't want this to happen again to our basement." I did then ask her what my next step would be and she directed me to call Kevin at the city clerk's office. And I did that and asked him about a property claim and his response was that it's not the city's fault, that the equipment malfunctioned and that the city would not have any coverage for this type of claim. I did tell him at that time that I would go home and visit with my husband and then I would maybe be calling him back, and I did the next day, and asked him to file a claim. And I believe at this time, he's done that for me as an adjuster called today to come out and see our basement. But with that situation, I am wondering, is the city liable for any of the damage to my basement? And if they aren't, why aren't they because it was their equipment that malfunctioned?
That's a fair question. Our attorney is not here tonight, but do the rest of the staff have an opinion about this? Kevin?
We always have opinions.
I know that, but can you help us out here?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the Kanappers, we've had this happen occasionally over time, but basically, the city has a very functioning sewer system. It worked last month, it worked last week, it worked yesterday, and then all of a sudden, something goes in that causes it to not function properly. Pretty much, the courts have found that the city has to know or should have known that this was going to malfunction. And that just has not occurred. The city has to jet their activities. The courts have found that if a municipal government jets out their sewer lines once a year, that is sufficient. The city does it twice a year. We have to clean out the live wells, the wet wells, at least once a year. We do it more often. And in this case, that happened even two weeks prior to this incident. So pretty much, I'm going to, and I've guessed, although we've filed the claim on their behalf, but the city will not be held liable for that reason and it will be consistent with the other claims that may have occurred in the last decade.
Who is our insurance carrier?
Well, the League of Minnesota Insurance Trust and then Allied Adjusters. We have our own and we're self-insured in our trust. And then the adjusters are Mark Evanson, I would guess, from Allied Adjusters.
Yes, that's who contacted us.
So at this point, we follow the due process of administration here and they'll wait for that review and then subsequent letter. But in any denial, the other option of any citizen not happy with that is off to district court. So, but there's only been one case in the last 20 years that the city has paid and that's when we put a Y in backwards and more or less flushed it into the home, not outside of the home, and that wasn't caught in the installation. Surfaced about seven, eight years later.
Okay, so all the appropriate paperwork has been submitted?
Correct.
Now it's up to the insurance company to either respond positively or negatively?
That's correct.
And we just have to wait and see what they do? Okay?
And I guess the general comment is municipal governments have to be found negligent in their activity. And we've got a, by the standards of the state, we've got a very fine operation and the maintenance is double what most municipal governments do in their lines. And we have all the proper jetting equipment and the staff to maintain it. So I don't look for a favorable answer for them, but I have informed them of that and we followed all the administrative steps.
So what caused the problem?
It's kind of complicated and because I'm not the engineering type, I would defer that to the city engineer.
Mel, is there a way to understand what caused the problem?
Well, yeah, there is. And I was not prepared for this tonight. I did get a summary of what did happen and what we are doing. But basically, what happens is the, when it goes into high wet well, it tips one way and goes to the alarm. The way it was being plugged, it couldn't physically go into high wet well alarm. And so what we've done is we fixed that so that it can go either way. And what was the other question?
Why did the problem happen?
It basically happened because it could not, the float couldn't tip to go up to indicate a high wet well. Therefore, no alarm was going off. We had staff at the plant. No alarm went off at the plant. And so you wonder if it's something other than the lift station. So they go out there and they can manually override that, which we did. And we also went out there about, I'd say, 20 minutes later and corrected the problem so it shouldn't happen again.
Okay.
What they found on the lower float was a long rope-like hair strand. And of course, cleaning out that two weeks earlier, that wasn't there. That's consistent with some of the problems over the years of a functioning system. And all of a sudden, a lot of paint rigs or something go down the system and clog it up. But, you know, you don't know that's going to happen, so the discretionary immunity of a municipal government pretty much is, that's not the concluding factor that would ever cause us to participate in the cleanup.
Prior to us owning the home, this did happen too. The homeowners before us had the sewer back into the basement once. The homeowners before us had the sewer back into their, into the basement once before also.
Okay. So at this point, you just need to wait to see what the insurance company says and then decide what you want to do after that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is this your husband?
Yes.
Did you want to say something tonight? Okay. All right, thank you. And the, and that's what I have for the, see, Mr. Bistrup already made his comments, so he's come and gone. That's all I have on the list for the open forum. Was there anybody else who wanted to address the council? Either of you two? Okay. We will then go on to the Finance Committee Report, which is number nine on the agenda. This is for February 26th. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda to do with municipal utilities proposed rate increases. Mr. Bob Bonowitz from the Municipal Utilities Board presented a request to raise electric, water, and district heating rates to cover the increased cost of operations. The overall increase in utility rates is 5.8% for electric, 8.5% for water, and 10% for district heating. And that will be each of, in two phases on the heating in 2007 and 2008. Following a lengthy discussion, we made a couple of, we made a recommendation and I will make a motion that the proposed ordinances be introduced for a hearing on March 9th, 2000, March 19th, 2007.
Second.
There's a motion and a second that we have a public hearing on March 19th to consider the proposed rate increases for electric, water, and heating. Comments?
Mr. Mayor, just for clarity, there'll be three hearings, three ordinances, but one motion will introduce them all.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
The next item was a housekeeping matter. It's intent to reimburse on project costs. Staff explained that the municipal utilities is planning on participating in a project to construct some power transmission lines. And that in order for them to include preliminary costs in any future financing, the utilities and the city must declare its intent to reimburse for any costs incurred prior to the financing. And I will introduce a resolution declaring the city's intent to reimburse itself for all preliminary costs to participate in the construction of power transmission lines.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution declaring that the city's intent is to reimburse itself for all preliminary costs to participate in the construction of a power transmission line. Further comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item was the waste treatment proposed rate increase. We reviewed the proposed increases in the waste treatment rates. This is an annual thing that we do. It goes back to the 2000 Springsteads Rate Study where we increased the rates 6.3, 6.35% annually. We also are making a recommendation that the utility replacement charge section of the ordinance be increased from $2 to $3 per month to help cover the underground improvement costs of the 10-year street improvement. Following discussion, there was a motion made second and passed, and I will introduce a motion to set the waste treatment rates as proposed and set a public hearing for March 19th, 2007.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to set a public hearing for March 19th, 2007 to consider waste treatment rate increases. Further comment? Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there an average price increase per household? There's something to that effect?
We, yeah, we, we asked for that information and that's going to be available at the public hearing so that everybody will know what it's going to do to the average.
In dollars?
Yes. Because we knew that that was important and we've asked for that information.
Thank you.
Anything else? Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
The final item were some reports. We reviewed the Rice Trust report for January and that was for information only. Unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the Finance Committee minutes of February 26th. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next is the Public Works Safety Committee Report for February 27th. Councilmember Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the agenda was in regards to the interim modifications for our wastewater treatment plant. And Craig Holmes from Donahue and Associates was at our meeting to explain those modifications. They have developed plans and specs for improvements. And those improvements include the replacement of an excess flow pump and then some piping modifications at our existing plant, which will optimize the hydraulic capacity of the, of the existing plant. And the estimated cost of this project is $170,000. He also explained, I believe, that this pump will be moved to the new facility when that is constructed. So, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to approve the plans and specs for Project 0713 and authorize advertisement for bids to be opened at 10:00 a.m. on April 10th, 2007.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve plans and specifications for Project Number 0713. Further comment about this? This is a resolution. Roll call.
Councilmember Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
And since we had Craig at the meeting, he gave his monthly report from Donahue and Associates on our new wastewater treatment facility. And he informed us, informed the committee that the design phase for the new facility is now 30% complete. And construction cost estimates have been prepared and reviewed with our city staff. Also, the alternate conveyance routes and also the alternate facility site. And then the public informational meeting, all was part of the, the report and last month's work. And if you recall, as the council, we went back to the original site near the city's current brush site as the preferred site. And Donahue will now proceed with the facility plan for routing the conveyance facilities. He also informed us that work has started for, on the design for the Southern Interceptor Sewer from 19th Avenue Southeast to the existing wastewater treatment facility to meet the 2007 construction schedule for 5th Street Southeast, east of the Candy Mall. And I believe it was Mel and Bruce and Craig that went to Washington DC, is that right? And they met with our elected officials, staff, and were requesting federal appropriations for fiscal year 2008. And other funding activity included initiating and securing a Minnesota revolving fund loan and a request for exemption from Minnesota sales tax for our new facility. And that was all for information only, Mr. Mayor. Number three was, is in regards to a final pay request from B&amp;H Petroleum for our airport, airport fueling system. They installed two 12,000-gallon fuel tanks at the new airport and it was completed in October. And now they have submitted a final pay request in the amount of $13,693.58, which is the 5% retainage. So, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to accept the project, authorize final payment to B&amp;H Petroleum in the amount of $13,693.58.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution that accepts the airport fueling system project and authorizes a final payment to B&amp;H Petroleum. Further comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Next item was in regards to our airport and the fact that 11 hangars have been relocated to the new airport and they're now operational. So we have two contractors that are looking for final payment on the work that they've done, one of them being Cornerstone of Wilmer and the other one Mid Central Concrete. Both of them are for the 5% retainage. And the first one, I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to accept the project, authorize final payment to Cornerstone of Wilmer Incorporated in the amount of $25,955.25.
Second.
We have a, a motion for a resolution to make final payment to Cornerstone of Wilmer in the amount of $25,955.25. Comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item was in regards to the Waterview Business Park and the street lighting project within that development. The poles and lighting are, that are being proposed are the same poles and lighting that are, been utilized on our Wilmer Avenue project and also on 1st Street. The estimated cost for this project is $110,000. In our discussion at the committee meeting, we were proposing an April 10th bid letting. However, staff has informed me that they would like to do it on April 2nd, which would give them a little more lead time on the project and, and help them in getting this project done. So, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to approve the plans and specs for Project 0706. Authorize advertisement for bids to be opened at 1:00 p.m. on April 2nd, 2007, rather than the 10th.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution that approves the plans and specifications for Project Number 0706 and bids to be opened on April 2nd.
Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mel, just in anticipation of being asked this question, we had some folks in last year ask about lighting and talked about light, light pollution concerns. I presume that what we're putting in directs the light downward?
Correct. This is light similar to the Wilmer Avenue and they've changed the head design so that more light actually goes, there virtually is no light that goes up on this style. This is not our conventional decorative light.
That's good news. Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The next item was in regards to our every other year practice as a city to seal coat the streets that we have crack sealed the year previous. And this year's work is estimated at $30,000. So, Mr. Mayor, I would, this is just a simple motion evidently, Kevin. All right?
I have a resolution.
Should be a resolution.
Should be a resolution.
All right. I would introduce a resolution to approve the plans and specs for Project 0708, authorize quotes. Oh, it's quotes, so it's still a resolution? It's quotes?
Well, it's argumentative.
Okay, it's still a resolution then.
A little bit letting and holding it on.
Quotes be received and opened at 1:00 p.m. March 21st, 2007.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to approve the plans and specifications for Project Number 0708 and bids to be opened on March 21st. Comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Next item was brought to our attention by our chief of police who informed us that the city attorney actually has a concern in regards to the definition of a public place within the city of Wilmer. And he explained an amendment to Section 3.3 of our municipal code, which would give a better definition of, of public place as being any building or outdoor space that is open to the public with or without an admission fee. Mr. Mayor, I would move to introduce the ordinance amendment to Section 3.3 for hearing on March 19th, 2007, which would give that better definition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to introduce an ordinance amendment on March 19th, 2007 regarding public place definition. Further comment? Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
We have a motion and a second to introduce an ordinance amendment on March 19th, 2007, regarding public place definition. Further comment? Those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Next item was a firefighter assistance grant and our fire chief, Mark Calvin, was there and the fire department is looking for permission from the council to participate in a regional application for the 2007 Assistance to Firefighters Grant. Federal funds to be requested will amount to $1 million and will be used to acquire 800 megahertz radio equipment used by the fire departments throughout Candyway County. Our fire department is requesting permission to purchase up to 13 mobile units and 45 portable radios for an estimated total of $203,000 and to act as the host applicant for the county. The grant requires a 10% local match by the city for its portion of the total grant. Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to approve staff's submittal of the 2007 Assistance to Firefighters Grant and to act as the host applicant for Candyway County.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to approve the staff's submittal of the 2007 Assistance to Firefighters Grant and then act as the host applicant. Further comment? Those in -- oh, this is a resolution? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
The last item was, we had a discussion in regards to the quiet zones along the railroads and gradually implementing those quiet zones and that was for information only, Mr. Mayor. And that is the completion of the minutes. If there's questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them. If there's not, move to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file these minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We are almost near the end of the agenda and what I'd like to do is take -- first to announce meetings and then we'll go to the department reports. For the general public, there is a community-oriented policing and problem-solving meeting scheduled for March 12th at 7:00 p.m. at Kennedy School. This is a citywide meeting. It's Monday, March 12th at 7:00 p.m. at Kennedy School. The topic is how the community can be involved in the bullying prevention efforts being undertaken in the Wilmer School District. This issue directly relates to later crime and police calls for service. Citizen input is very important and I urge all of our citizens to consider attending this meeting again Monday, March 12th at 7:00 p.m. at Kennedy School. For council meetings, finance?
Finance will meet Monday, the 12th at 4:45.
March 12th, 4:45, City Finance. Public Works, Public Safety?
Tuesday, March 13th, 4:45.
Public Works, Public Safety, March 13th, Tuesday, 4:45. Labor?
No meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Community Development?
Community Development, Thursday, March 15th, 4:45.
March 15th, 4:45, Community Development. Are there any other announcements before the council tonight before we go to department reports?
Mayor, could I request to be excused from the March 19th city council meeting? I will be out of state.
Sure. All right. I should announce to the council that I will be in Washington, D.C. next week for a couple of days, visiting some of our congressmen and also at the National League of Cities meeting out there, which is basically a lobbying effort on the Hill, so I'll be leaving on Saturday.
Mr. Mayor, if there are announcements, I'll also be in Washington, D.C. with the municipal utilities commission for convention and lobbying with meeting with legislators.
Good. All right. Now we will go to our two department reports. You know, I was looking at Mr. Brizendeen tonight and in the back of my head I kept thinking, why is this guy wearing a suit and tie?
Mr. Mayor, I'll answer that when I get to the podium.
I can't remember the last time I've seen you with a suit and tie. I'd like to welcome our city clerk, Mr. Kevin Halliday, who is going to present the annual report for his office, the City Clerk Treasury Report. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Another year has gone by so quickly that we're here presenting the departmental reports. All nine of them will be presented in succession and for the viewership at home, approximately one week after the presentation, they should be uploaded on the website, should they care to check out additional statistics. Also, I know many times you replace these in your three-ring binder from prior years, but if you'd care to have a new three-ring binder to collect all these reports, just let us know and we'll get you that in a subsequent week. I'll begin on page one with licenses and permits. Just a quick note that the total amount collected for the various permits was $49,400, up just -- oh, up about $7,000 from prior years, mainly due to the addition of one on-sale liquor license at $4,000. Total permits were 584, quite consistent with prior years. Page two has our parking enforcement. This year, the number of tickets issued was a very large increase over prior year, $3,851 versus $2,700 last year. The total dollars collected commensurates with that at totaling $26,675 as opposed to $21,000. The administrative citations were reduced this year to 739 from a prior year, 920. The dollars collected was $34,055, down just somewhat by the number issued. Page three has probably one of the highlights to report and also some spots of dismal performance, but before I enter it, I just want to give a little overall goal here that we have is that we have the premium and property casualty losses, try to have a net zero as our goal for the year. And by that, I'll walk you through 2005 so we can compare to 2006. 2005, we paid out premiums of $85,000. The dividend from our league insurance was $47,158, giving us the $38,800 there for net premiums. The paid losses and expenses were roughly $22,000. We add that to the 38, coming up with $60,000. And as you know, we have a million dollars set aside in the insurance deductible fund that was set aside from rebates from the leagues since 1987. That roughly made at 5% $50,000 of interest earnings to offset that $60,000 in premiums and losses for $10,000 net cost for property and casualty. And this year, we were setting an all-time record, in fact, with the paid losses to date of $1,885 with only one claim pending, that is the all-time low paid losses for the city of Wilmer on record. And I'm kind of confident on the last one, so it will be low. But unfortunately, as you can see in the dividends, because of some losses in the trust from our sister cities, we had a large hit in the dividends, down to $15,419. So that just gave us a net premium of $72,000 paid out versus $38,000 last year. Even with the losses at an all-time record low, that combination is $74,000 and interest rates not being much better, maybe only $50,000 coming off that fund, we had a net cost of property and casualty premiums and losses at around $20,000, almost doubled from the prior year. But from the risk management viewpoint, having paid losses and expenses at $2,000 is quite Page four on workers' compensation. The statistics for 2006 show that we have roughly 154 full-time equivalencies, putting man-hours at over $245,000. We have the identical, first report of injuries filed at 19 as in prior year, only one case where an individual was away from work. And that individual was away from work for 27 complete days and then there is a few that he was underutilized by having a different work category, but he was back in the employment of the city. The total dollars spent there were about four times greater than the prior year at $12,337. A lot of that loss was for some payroll. Page five has our investment portfolio, our balance. It increased again, as it has in most years, quite a pattern of increasing. We're at $48,803, the last day of the year. That increases quite a bit, though, without being able to utilize that as we gain about 20 -- or $2.6 million in LGA near the end and our tax settlement is also near the end in December. But the interest and dividends, not as great as prior years, is $1,650,000. As you can see by the graph, it is making a steady climb back up. However, it's nothing to get excited about yet. Seems like every time that we have a federal agency for 6% or something, as soon as the call date comes, they call it in and try to replace it for something in the 5%. And again, the city, as you know, must maintain itself in the fixed area and we don't gamble as much in stocks and bonds. Our Wilmer Regional Access Channel, the production area in the yellow there shows that we are up again in productions for about the 15th straight year and it's starting to level off a little bit with total productions in cable casts for the year of $11,550. We brought in a franchise 5% fee from the two franchisees of $178,687. We do have a new employee there, David Hildenbrand, and there's a picture there also of our do-you-know hosts, Rudy V. Hill and now Jamin Johnson-Snyder. Elections, page seven. We had a good time with elections and we had some new equipment this year. It was kind of uneventful as the -- as you know, the five incumbent officers for the city ran unopposed and pretty uneventful, which I'm sure you're all happy for. What we showed on in the graphs is the voter turnout. In the general election in the lower right is a 67.11% turnout. In the primary, it was a 36.15% and that compares to the two prior elections. We have a report from our city assessor, which we like to share with you each year on page eight. It shows the distribution of the tax dollar and how we got this collected. You see in the red, the schools are 20.3% of that tax dollar. The city is 21.05%, the county being 56.34% and then our local EDC and HRA picking up that balance. Page nine has the origination of the tax dollars and we like to compare this with a decade just to see how things have switched through the legislative process. As you can see in the blue, the personal property was 0.94% as opposed to 1.54, not very significant, but the industrial property now is reduced to 6.71% as a decade ago they paid 11.51%. The commercial property now pays 28.76% as opposed to 37.71 a decade ago. And the agricultural, residential and apartment properties are now paying 64.53% when 10 years ago they paid 49.24%. And lastly, we just talk a little bit about CAT. It's not really a department, but I am a liaison to the CAT operations and it's roughly been seven years since it has begun and it's involved in quite a comprehensive county-wide system. In the early part of 2006, we put in some video surveillance cameras in each bus. They did buy some tire equipment, a changer and a balancer, and that helps reduce the maintenance costs and the delivery of a bus and all that downtime. We purchased a 17-passenger replacement bus and now we continue to maintain our fleet of nine buses. During 2006 statewide bus rodeo that was in Duluth, they did announce that Wilmer was the recipient of the bus rodeo for 2007 and we'll be doing that a week after Sunshine out at the Civic Center. We spent some time during the year of trying to get a central business district bus shelter and we're still planning for this new shared ride subsidized taxi service since the taxi service in Wilmer has gone out of business. Just shows there the seven-year history of the revenues and expenses, the revenues being $923,000, the expenses of $861,000 without the audit being finalized. A lot of consistency in the ridership totals that are listed there in the bottom. With that, Mr. Mayor, I will just entertain any questions.
Thanks, Kevin. Any comments or questions for Mr. Halliday? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, thank you for your report. I think I asked this question last year, but on page nine, you're talking about the origination of tax dollars and basically I think I heard you to say that 10 years ago, business and industrial and residential basically were equal, that the origination of tax dollars 10 years ago was about half 50-50. And today, what I think I'm hearing you say is that 2/3 of the dollars roughly are coming from residential and apartment properties and a shade over 1/3 from industrial.
Correct. You could look at it that way. You add the industrial and the commercial together, 10 years ago would be roughly 48-49 and that's what the agricultural, residential and apartments were. So legislatively, the shift was to make things a little easier in the commercial property and of course, it's still a pie. You're getting the pie from somebody, so the shift went over to the residential and apartment properties.
And again, what I'm hearing you say is that those were all legislative decisions made in St. Paul and not anything done locally.
Locally, that is correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Kevin or Bruce, go ahead.
Yeah, Kevin, our licensers for pets, dogs and cats, are they being issued at veterinary clinics now that -- are they doing that for us, sir?
Yes, they are and we use them as agents. They have improved the count. As you can see by the numbers, the involvement of all of our citizens in licensing their animals is a far cry from perfection and that's just a rainbow that we'll probably chase forever. But the benefit of licensing is, of course, to have the vaccination taken care of every three years. So we do have a cycle of about every three years, we have a lot more and then because they're not into having any vaccinations, they don't come in in those off-years to get any licensing.
Anyone else? Thanks, Kevin, for your good report. Steve? Steve Brizendeen is the Director of Community Education and Recreation. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, key members of the council, fellow staff and citizens watching this evening. It's my pleasure to give you the Community Education and Recreation Report for 2006. As to the question to my attire, Mr. Mayor, I had noticed the last few meetings that Mr. Peterson and Mr. Odens had dressed appropriately when they're in front of the podium and then I get here tonight and Mr. Halliday did not follow suit, so with that, we'll think about our attire at future meetings. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about our programs tonight. My lead-off page that you're looking at, number one, is talking about staff and the wonderful staff that we've got that fulfill the opportunities that we give to the citizens of Wilmer. We also talk about our facilities and the number of facilities that we've got and the quality of facilities and the way the Public Works staff for the city and the custodial staff for the school take care of our facilities is second to none. I think the citizens of this community, when they utilize our facilities, are getting first-class operations. Programs, we continue to look for opportunities to collaborate and partner with other agencies and entities so that we can spread our tax resources as far as possible and not necessarily always having to be the driver, but putting ourselves in a partner position and taking a ride with other leaders of the community as well. Then we talk about our volunteers and that gets us into our second page of our advisory council members being listed and how important they are as they are the eyes and ears of our community and they bring to us on a monthly basis what the needs are from both the programming and facility standpoint for community ed and rec activities. Page three, we start with our coordinators' reports and the list of coordinators and staff, full-time staff for our department are listed on page two and each one of the coordinators took an opportunity to talk about the things that they had done in 2006. Nick Thompson has led our adult recreation and aquatics programming for the last year and a half. It's with a sad note that I'll let you folks know tonight, if you have not heard, that Nick has accepted a new position, so we have just posted his position as of today. He'll be with us until March 15th. Nick was responsible for the Aquatics Center and he talks about 2006 summer and how that we had over 1,000 more people utilize that facility than we did in 2005. One of the reasons we believe for that is the fact that we went to a season pass and that enabled folks to plop down the fee for the summer and then attend that facility as many times as possible. Sunshine Week is obviously a big week for the whole community and it's no different for the Aquatics Center. We average over 500 participants a day when Sunshine Fest takes place. So overall, over 15,000 participants took advantage of the Aquatics Center last summer. Our adult recreation programs have seen a little upsurge the last couple of years. Most of our adult leagues had a 5% to 10% growth, which after years of decline and changing needs within our adult populations, it was a good sign to see. Our baseball program has seen an upswing due to trying to do more of an in-house area league. I think that's assisted volunteer parents who have been the coaches for this to enable them to have a schedule, play a couple of games a week, and maybe practice once or twice a week, and knowing when that's going to take place, I think, has been very helpful for that program, and we look to do the same with our softball program this summer. The youth football team, the fifth and sixth grade football program, had twelve teams in the league last year, five of which were Wilmer, and the rest of them came from the communities listed on page four. One thing he talks about is the utilization of the soccer fields for that program last fall. We were able to get those fields ready with seating completed, and we're hopeful that the lighting and seating bleacher project will take place this spring. We'll open up bids for that and get the lights and bleacher systems installed by the middle of summer, so the mayor's soccer tournament can take place sometime later this summer. Tammy Riddigan leads our youth development, youth service opportunities. Tammy, this is the second year that she's taught out at the high school. We send her out there for one block a day the first three quarters of the year, and she works with eleventh and twelfth graders on a youth service class. We think it's a great collaboration to be involved with the high school students and place the importance of volunteer work and service work into their curriculum. Prairie Fire Theater has been back for the tenth row. This is the eleventh year, tenth year, this is the eleventh year, actually, 2007, that we've had Prairie Fire Theater out here, and it still continues to be a highlight for the many youngsters that get their first opportunity to partake in theater. Again, a number of other opportunities and collaborations that take place within her programs, our Twenty-First Century Learning Programs. Tammy handles the enrichment activities. We've also got Prairie Woods Environmental Learning Center as a wonderful asset to our students, and we bring out groups of people to that site quite often throughout the course of the year. LeAnn Freeman has taken on much of a senior focus, and we're looking to do that as we've reevaluated our staffing needs with the openings that we've got. LeAnn Freeman is doing senior programming and intergenerational programming and handling the senior center. She's also going to assist me with park development in the future. And LeAnn's article talks a lot about the baby boomer generation and what our needs are going to be as those seventy-five million Americans born between nineteen forty-six and nineteen sixty-four start retiring, and the needs that they're going to have in their retirement versus the current seniors and what they're looking to do. We believe that this group of retirees will want to be more active, and we hope to capitalize on that activity by creating learning opportunities and intergenerational programs with that group of folks. Jody Wambach leads our early childhood programs. One of the neatest opportunities that we've got to give the students, the zero-to-five-year-old population, their first educational experience. She talks a lot about the different programs that she leads. We don't do it all at Washington Learning Center. She says we're out and about. We go to the WIC clinics, Rice Hospital, Paz Esperanza Church, Jennie O. Turkey Store, and home visits. Our family literacy program continues to grow. We've got some opportunities out there that we've written some grants for. We'd like to see double the participation in our family lip program. Our preschool continues to go, stretch the resources as far as possible. The funding for that program has decreased since 2003, so we are able to maximize our dollars by the partnerships that we've got with Head Start and other agencies in the community. And she's informing us that the week of the young child this year is April twenty-third to April twenty-seventh. Ann Trokel has led our Cardinal Kids preschool program. This is the third year we've offered that program. It's a fee-based along with a special needs students. We've got fifteen regular ed students that pay a tuition to be involved, and then we've got five special needs students that are placed in there as well. Runs Monday through Friday during the school year, runs in conjunction with the school calendar, and the preschool itself is from nine to two-thirty, and we offer the care piece along with our Cardinal Place program. So students, if they need be, can be at that program from six-thirty in the morning till six P.M. Ann Rizloff leads our Twenty-First Century After School Learning Programs. That grant is in its last year of funding. The grant runs out August thirty-first. That's been about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars the last four years of programming that we've been able to augment our academic setting during the day with after-school enrichments and academic assistant classes for our elementary students the last four years, and the gains that we're showing are pretty tremendous gains. And our hope is, we've written a new grant this year, we should be finding out in the next month or so whether we're successful or not, but if we're not, it's going to leave a big gap in services. We're going to have to put our heads together on how do we serve the over seven-hundred youth that we've been a part of, that have been a part of this program the last four years, and also this new grant that we wrote's got a seven-twelve piece to it as well. On page nine, Janet Flick is our Adult Basic Education Coordinator, and she talks about her program. Again, Wilmer is the host for a consortium of nine school districts and two county jails, so many hours of programming for our adult learners go into that program, and the amazing things that happen in her rooms on a daily basis. If you have not stopped by to see that, please do so. Then we conclude with Kevin Mattson's report from the Civic Center. He talks about the ice usage and some of our major renters have, their hours are declining, mostly the hockey association, and how Kevin tries to pick up the pieces and put new programming into the facility with the decrease in hours of our major user. It seems to be working. As you can see, our revenue's actually increased even though our major users actually had a decline in their use. So he's found new niches. The curling has been a wonderful opportunity for us as a community to utilize that facility. He's pretty excited about the school year apprehens, or the new year coming up. He's apprehensive due to all the work that's going to take place up there, but he knows by next Christmas, when everything's said and done, that that facility will be much better for the work that's being done to it this summer. He's got some data. I've also got more reports of Kevin's on a separate handout that I'll get to all of you folks as we wrap up here. And that being said, I open myself up for questions.
Thanks, Steve. Councilmembers, any questions here? Steve, could you comment on the youth hockey program and why is that declining? What do you see happening there?
I think like most things with recreational opportunities, you've got ebbs and flows, and in this case, I think you're really seeing a demographic change. We have not probably embraced our diversity in this community when it comes to our hockey program. Obviously, there's probably not a lot of ice time in where our newest residents are coming from, and whether that's our Somali population or our Latino population. So what Kevin's trying to do is to collaborate with our FIAE departments and school systems to try to get those youngsters to get out on the ice and see if it's something that they'd enjoy, but I think that's probably where a lot of that decline has come from is our elementary grades are much more diverse than our past elementary grades, and that diversity is not utilizing the ice as our old population did.
And then Stephen, our youth football program, when you have teams coming from Atwater and New London, how does that, how does the fee structure work there when there are people who are not from Wilmer that use our facilities?
We charge a fee for facility usage to all teams, and then our residents, we charge the program cost as well. There's X amount of dollars that it takes to run this football program, so those costs are built into our local fees, and then based on the number of games, other communities host games as well, so based on the number of games we host versus other communities, we come up with a fee structure that makes sense and tries to put some of the resources back in the facilities that we use.
And then finally, soccer. What's the volume of soccer going on in terms of numbers of teams? How big is this?
That's hard to, I don't include that in my report because the majority of the team structure takes place in the associations and the adult leagues that are run independently of our department, but I believe the last, if I recall correctly, our adult Latino league is hosted by themselves, and if I recall correctly, I think they had upwards of twelve teams. Our youth numbers are well over a hundred and growing annually, and I think they put one team together per age group, and I'm not sure if anybody could help me with that, but I think they start at the ten-year-olds, and so they've got a ten-and-under, twelve-and-under, fourteen-and-sixteens, very similar to our hockey programs.
And now we have soccer out at Ridgewater College, too?
Yes, we do, yep, and we'll be working with them on the use of facility currently. They're using Hodap. They'd actually like to move out to utilize the new soccer fields in the future, so we'll be working with them on what plans are in place for that.
And that field, you think, should be ready by the fall?
Yeah, the fall. The field was actually ready last fall. We did not utilize it last summer. We wanted to give it the summer to grow, so the grass is good. We just hope to get the lighting and bleacher systems in. Should be accepting bids in the next four or five weeks, hopefully, and project to start early spring, summer, and completed by the end of June.
So an invitational soccer tournament might be a possibility?
It certainly will be a possibility, and we'll be working with the soccer association and Nidel at the college to see what we can do about that.
Good, I look forward to that. Anything else from councilmembers? Steve, thank you for your report. Well done.
Thank you.
I think our business is completed. Is there anything else coming for the council tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion?
Second.
And it's been seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.